Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June Hoboken Board of Education meeting. I'd like to congratulate all of our students and our teachers for completing this crazy school year. But it was a successful one at that. And we now have our eighth grade moving up ceremony and high school graduation to look forward to, which will be nice to do in person. With that, good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This, tell me if I'm wrong enough. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act, NDA SA 10-4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on June 10th and June 11th, 2020. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Hoboken Board of Education wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The full meeting recorded will also be made available on board docs, which can be accessed through the district home page. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the form of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of this meeting, and if used as necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, earthy and just as for all.
We have the roll call, please, Ms. Good.
Ms. Katamatory?
Here.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Mr. Delator?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Cluffel?
Here.
Ms. Hooker?
Here.
Ms. Simon?
Here.
Mr. Karian?
Here.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. We are going to start with our student recognition portion of the meeting. So at this time, I will turn the meeting over to Ms. Sandra Rodriguez Gomez.
Good evening. We will be honoring 11 students today both the months of May and June. What we're going to do, we're going to go a little bit out of order today. We will begin with Hoboken Middle School as their May honoree is currently joining us. I believe she's on board an airplane already. And so we will ask that, and then move along to June. We will begin with Principal Mara from Hoboken Middle School. She will then introduce Principal Bartlett from Brant's, and he will introduce Ms. Addie O'Connor, so on and so forth. In lieu of having Principal Shannon join us, we have Vice Principal Steve Dickerson, who will be doing the honors for the Wallace School. And we will close, of course, with Hoboken High School. Ms. Mara?
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez. So it's my honor tonight to speak first about Ms. Annalene Schistler, who is coming to us, getting ready to leave on a 7:30 flight. So we appreciate your dedication to your nomination of Student of the Month. In speaking with Annalene today, she shared with me that her remote learning was really productive. She even continued her Dutch lessons with her Dutch school throughout. And Mom and Dad and her brother Maxime wanted to share that Annalene is funny, always wanting to help people, and extremely dedicated and organized. She really likes to do impressions and talk with a British accent, which is something I did not know. And she also, they also felt that she did a really great job with remote learning. So Annalene, congratulations on being Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for May, and we wish you a really safe and enjoyable trip.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our Student of the Month, the Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for June is Mr. Joseph Checkley, Joe Checkley, which I found out today, he prefers Joe over Joseph. And I'm going to actually share what his parents and brother Ali shared with us, with me today, which I think really captures what Ms. Donnelly and Ms. Gentili, who nominated Joe, were sharing with me. His parents and brother says, "Since moving to the US from the UK in August, we couldn't be more proud of how our boys have settled. To leave a strong friend and family base at any time in your life is tough, but to move to a country, a different country, was a big ask. Joe walked to a brand new school, not knowing anyone or how the system works. He stepped well outside his comfort zone and continues to challenge himself regularly in adapting to the new environment and finding himself. When we look back to the first day of moving, to the recognition of him being Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for June, it's a real testament to the young man he's becoming, and as parents, we couldn't be more proud. Congratulations, Joe, on being Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for June." And now I'll introduce Mr. Bartlett, Principal of Brant Elementary School.
Thank you, Ms. Mara. I'd like to start by recognizing our May 2020 Student of the Month for Joseph F. Brant Elementary School, Mr. Jonathan McDonald. Jonathan was nominated by his homeroom teacher, Ms. Lake. He came to Brant School in October of this year. Ms. Lake said, "School," he started school every day with a smile from ear to ear. He was kind, friendly, and compassionate. He had no problem fitting into the classroom environment. He welcomed his peers with open arms, and they in turn welcomed him with open arms. Jonathan persevered during remote learning. He joined every Zoom call promptly with a smile on his face and ready to learn. He asked questions when he needed clarification. He accepted all the feedback that Ms. Lake had to give him. He made necessary adjustments for future assignments. Jonathan did not let remote learning affect his motivation or his determination to succeed. His favorite subject is science. He loves to do experiments and learn about all things nonfiction. He really likes sharks. He can recite endless facts about them and is even really great at drawing them as well. One of the things I always looked forward to as principal was the handshake that Jonathan and I would share when he saw me in the morning. At first, he was a bit shy, but then after a while, it was straight, full-on, web-to-web, looking me right in the eye and said, "Good morning, Mr. Bartlett." And I would say, "Good morning, Jonathan." It was always a really cool moment to share. So we are extremely proud of Jonathan, and we are incredibly happy that he joined our Brant School family. So please join me in congratulating Mr. Jonathan McDonald, our May 2020 Joseph F. Brant Elementary School Student of the Month.
Thank you.
And congratulations are in order to Collins Rourke, our Joseph F. Brant Elementary School Student of the Month for June 2020. Collins was nominated by her first-grade teacher, Mrs. Mylak. Mrs. Mylak said, quote, "It has been such a joy to have Collins as a student in my class this year. Her positive attitude, creativity, and zest for learning brightened up each and every day. Collins is an excellent writer and created many short stories and comic books during the remote learning period, which Ms. Mylak thoroughly enjoyed reading. She is kind-hearted and has a great sense of humor, which keeps her friends and everyone else laughing. Collins has shown tremendous growth, both academically and socially this year, and we could not be more proud of the student she has become. She truly embodies the Brant spirit. As principal, I can always count on Collins to give me a huge smile and a hug. We've had the chance to watch her blossom from kindergarten to first grade. She is a wonderful friend to her peers and an example of how focus and dedication make anything possible. Whenever I would drop by Mrs. Mylak's class, Collins was always excited to show me what she was working on. Her enthusiasm for learning is wonderful, and I thank her for always being willing to share it with us." Congratulations to Ms. Collins Rourke, the June 2020 Joseph F. Brant Elementary School Student of the Month. This time, I would like to introduce the Principal of the Thomas G. Connors Elementary School, Mrs. Juliana Addie.
Hello, good evening. So I'm so excited because we're going to be honoring three Students of the Month, one for April, one for May, and one for June. So we're going to start off with James Bellotti, Connor's Student of the Month for April. James is a dedicated and enthusiastic student. He asks thoughtful questions about topics discussed in class and extends the application of those skills. James is new to the Hoboken School District, and he has embraced the Connors Koala environment and made great friends. In addition to his dedication as a student throughout the year, he has been an exemplary student during remote learning. James is always on our Zoom meetings, ready to share his stories of his home adventures with his cheerful personality. He has risen to remote learning challenges by completing assignments regularly, and he participates in online discussions. His favorite subject is math. He often goes beyond the grade-level curriculum to explore other topics for math. For example, he inquired about positive and negative numbers and asked for assignments with integers. James is a member of the Connors Chorus and plays the trumpet in the school band with Mr. Zardo. In class, he's an active participant, and he's always willing to help his classmates. He also demonstrates fantastic computer skills, making presentations, conducting research, and exploring topics with global pen pals. James, you're an exemplary student in both academics and kindness, and we are so proud of you. Congratulations, James. And now we're going to do our Connors May Student of the Month, Malia Stewart. Congratulations to Malia, Connor's student for May. Malia is a student who comes in every day, ready to learn, and always tries her best. If she doesn't understand something, she uses the growth mindset to push forward and grow. Her attention to detail and effort during remote learning has truly been impeccable. She is kind and respectful to her peers and school administration. She always participates and is eager to get started on her work. Not only does Malia complete her work with pride, but she also helps her peers succeed. She's a model student. Malia has such a beautiful spirit, and it's a true pleasure to be around, especially with her infectious laughter. She's an excellent big sister to her little brother. She's a proud member of the Connors Choir and Bands. Congratulations, Malia. We are so proud of your achievements. We know that you have a bright future ahead of you. We wish you the best of luck next year at Hoboken Middle School. We know you will be amazing. Congratulations. We're going to miss you so much. Feel free to come back and visit because you'll always be a part of our Connors family. So we miss you, and we wish you the best of luck next year. Congratulations, Malia. And now for our June Student of the Month. Congratulations to Stone Duskin. Stone is a graduate of our kindergarten, and he was in Ms. Lauren Schultes's class. Stone has been an active participant in all Ms. Schultes's Zoom sessions. He's always raising his hand and sharing what he knows about a given topic. Stone completes all of his assignments and even goes above and beyond to complete extra math workbook pages. He also includes his younger brother Rhett in some of the fun kindergarten Wiggles activities. It is evident that Stone is a loving and caring older brother. It's my honor to recognize Stone as Student of the Month. Stone is part of the Connors Green Team with his parents. He's always looking for ways to promote environmental protection and reuse, reduce, and recycling. Academically, Stone meets and exceeds all requirements for kindergarten. He completes all of his work with flying colors. Stone is a great friend and is a kind, kind student. He's an asset to our Connor School and our student body because he's a caring friend, a helper to the environment, and an active participant in all learning. Stone, we are so, so proud of you, and congratulations for getting June Student of the Month.
Yay, Stone.
I would like to introduce Mr. Stephen Dickerson, Vice Principal of Wallace.
Good evening, everyone. How are you doing? I am so excited to, I have to announce for two of our Student of the Month. First, for May, Student of the Month, it's Anna Lee Rosado. We are here to celebrate Anna Lee as our Wallace Student of the Month for May 2020. Anna Lee is a second-grade student in Ms. Mazon's class. She's a very sweet, well-behaved young girl who treats her classmates and teachers with respect and kindness. Anna Lee has made great advancements this year. In the beginning of the school year, she was extremely shy and fearful of making a mistake, but now she attacks all of her tasks with pride and confidence. Anna Lee is motivated to learn and be her best. She has acquired a curiosity, a thirst for learning, and takes every opportunity to observe the environment around her. Anna Lee has made immense progress as a result of her boundless effort, determination, and hard work. She's become an extremely enthusiastic learner and a model student for her peers to emulate. She takes every opportunity to connect her learning to her own life. Recently, she went with her mother on a nature walk, identifying examples of erosion, weathering, and explaining the process of what she has learned. In her excursion, she was determined to discover some of the plants and animals she had recently learned about in her reading. Anna Lee is very proud of her Mexican heritage and recently took a trip this year, reconnecting with family and traditions. She returned with so much information to share with us, and we were looking forward to learning more and celebrating the history of Mexican heritage for Cinco de Mayo. Anna Lee has shown resilience in the face of adversity to keep moving forward on a positive course. Ms. Mazon felt the best way to encapsulate the essence of Anna Lee was she began as a very tiny cocoon and emerged into a glowing, beautiful butterfly. Personally, personally, to watch this form of metamorphosis and a student is one of the most joyous and rewarding moments a teacher can experience in their career. I am so proud to have Anna Lee represent Wallace Elementary School as the May 2020 Student of the Month. Let's hear it for Anna Lee. Now, for our June Student of the Month, I would like to announce Elias Rivera. Please join me celebrating, yay, there we go. Please join me in celebrating Elias Rivera, our Wallace Student of the Month for June 2020. Elias Rivera is currently in Ms. Iende's pre-K class. Elias is new to the Wallace community but has been a ray of light from the moment he began his journey with us. We have witnessed his willingness to participate with his Zoom sessions that are held twice per day. Elias has presented an excitement during the Zoom meetings that brings joy and levity to our close-knit family. He has also shown eagerness to learn in the new activities that are taught each day. Ms. Iende has expressed Elias has a great quality as a student, which is why it was her pleasure to nominate him as Student of the Month. He is an active participant in virtual learning. He enjoys the morning meetings, which consist of learning about the weather and singing various songs. We are honored to nominate Elias Rivera. Elias's favorite color is blue. His interests are watching movies, listening to music, cars, dinosaurs, and loves eating lollipops. His hobbies are playing video games with cars, singing and dancing. With such fun and engaging personality, we truly enjoy the energy and presence he brings to his class. I am so proud to have Elias as Wallace Elementary Student of the Month for June 2020. Let's hear it for Elias. And now, without further ado, I would like to welcome Ms. Pick from Hoboken High School.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm proud to announce our May Student of the Month, Rocco Ricardi. Rocco embodies all the characteristics that the Student of the Month should have. Excellent student, positive attitude, and the ability to overcome adversity. The fourth marking period was challenging for Rocco and his family, but he came through it like a champ. He strives for academic excellence and meets the mark. Rocco understands the importance of education, and he never falls short. One teacher said that he is the student that every teacher dreams of having in their class: polite, engaged, and always willing to go above and beyond. He was unsure about his schedule this year, but with perseverance and strong study skills, he did an amazing job, which is why he is being honored tonight. He is quiet and unassuming and never looks for attention. Well, Rocco, I have news for you. If you continue this work, you will have to get used to the attention. Rocco is going to be a junior in September, and he has maintained a solid GPA through his two years. This is an important year, but I am confident that he will continue to amaze us each and every day. Congratulations, Rocco. And for my June Student of the Month, Christian Bianchi. Happy and always smiling, Christian is what pops into my mind whenever I think of Christian. He is upbeat and optimistic. He is creative and empathetic towards others and demonstrates leadership qualities in the classroom. He is also described by many of his teachers as hard-working, and he never shirps responsibility. Ms. Weiner, his guidance counselor, has been working with Christian for years, and she shares that he is a very driven and has been talking to her consistently about college since the ninth grade. He applied for and was accepted to the Hispanic Student College Institute last year and attended last summer. It was a great chance to attend college classes and also stay on a college campus. I think Ms. Stephen summed it up best. From day one, Christian has demonstrated his desire to achieve. He arrived in class full of questions and has continued to provoke thought and discussion amongst his peers with respect to all course material and to much of the world itself. Christian is not just a seeker of knowledge. He is the type of student teachers cherish in that he looks for connections and meaning. With a solid 3.7 GPA, AP coursework in his schedule as he enters his senior year. I know we will all be looking forward to hearing many more accolades, as well as what lucky university will grab him. Congratulations, Christian.
Well, congratulations to all of our students. We hope you have a wonderful summer, rest up, and get ready for September. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin with a few important updates. First, we have been logging in all of our students who transferred out of the district in terms of moving from Hoboken to another location. That number is actually lower than I thought it was going to be. So as of right now, we're at 26 students that have transferred out of the district. However, we have registered close to 100 new students in the district, and our kindergarten through 12th grade enrollment is currently up by 351 students from last year, and our kindergarten class has topped 400. Second, I am expecting an announcement tomorrow regarding the guidance on September for schools in New Jersey. Once we receive this guidance, we will begin to put a committee together, gather, do some surveying of parents and staff, who will start planning, and we will begin to communicate with all families regarding what September will actually look like. Third, this summer, we're operating three categories of programs. The first is a three-week period of time in which we are offering summer fitness activities at JFK Stadium for children from pre-K all the way to grade 12. These are a range of one-hour, fitness-oriented, fun activities for kids to get outside. We will obviously be following all of the safety protocols necessary, but these programs will run from 9:30 in the morning until 3:30. We'll have a little break, and then they'll run again from 6:30 in the evening until 8:30. We're also going to be running a hybrid extended school year program at Wallace Elementary School. This program will have children enrolled both in-person and remotely for academic social development and for related therapies. And finally, we're going to be hosting individualized summer academic programs for students in grades K through 12 in order to meet their personal needs. There is going to be a required program for skills development that parents have the opportunity to select either onsite or remote. This will be a program that will run for four days a week, Monday through Thursday. We're also going to be operating a recommended academic program. Also, parents can select whether it be remote or onsite, and this will take place two days a week. And then finally, there's an enrichment program, which is going to be done remotely, and it is optional. So some parents have asked, and some students as well, whether or not they will have their traditional summer math and language arts assignments. The answer to that is no. We've decided to change it up a little this year. We are making the enrichment process optional for families, and the other programs have been developed specifically to meet the exact needs of the children that have been identified. Fourth, Hoboken High School's graduation is going to take place on Wednesday, July 8th, at JFK Stadium at 6 o'clock PM. Hoboken Middle School's Moving Up Ceremony is going to take place on Thursday, July 9th, at JFK Stadium at 6 o'clock. We will also be hosting Hoboken Charter High School's graduation on Friday, July 10th. All safety guidelines will be followed, and only those with tickets may attend in order to ensure that we meet the outdoor social gathering parameters. Fifth, I am pleased to announce that our district received a letter indicating that we successfully scored 80% or higher in each of the five Q-SAC categories: Instruction and Program, Fiscal Management, Governance, Operations, and Personnel, placing our district in what's considered a high-performing category. Sixth, since March 16th, the entire state was launched into remote learning. And while I would like to thank each and every educator one by one, I will instead say thank you to everyone. From my central office team and principals to our teachers and clerks, parists, custodians, security, this truly was a total team effort. We planned and implemented, and we took some feedback, and then we started the process all over again, planning and implementing, and then taking feedback and doing it again. Each staff member did everything that they could to meet the needs of our students. I think we truly grew from this experience, and we certainly learned a lot. I could not have shit of my assistant superintendent, Ms. Sandra Rodriguez Gomez, my Director of Operations, Mr. Damian Arnone, the Tech Department, the Facilities Department, the Business Office, and also Mr. Chris Munoz specifically for all of the time and hours that he put forward, uploading every single video every day and facilitating every activity that we hosted in the district during the remote learning process. So thank you to everyone for making the remote learning experience successful, and we hope that what we did learn from the experience, we can take to the next level if September lends itself to additional remote learning. Lastly, I am proud to report that there's a resolution on tonight's agenda that I am asking the Board of Education to approve. This resolution reflects the voices of many people. I ask the Board of Education to approve this resolution as we continue to work towards social justice and educational equity. At this time, I would like to read the resolution and ask not only for the board's support, but also for the support of the community at large. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approves the Hoboken Public School District's commitment to social justice and educational equity. Whereas, the mission of the Hoboken Public School District is to prepare confident and resilient graduates who value academic achievement, embrace challenge, honor diversity, appreciate collaboration, and respectfully contribute to their local and collaboration, and respectfully contribute to their local and wider communities. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District is a vibrant, diverse school community. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District commits to fostering equity, inclusion, acceptance, dignity, and the equal rights and opportunities for all students, staff, families, and community members. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District must confront issues of social injustice in order to alleviate the pain and impact experienced by those who have been directly affected by inequitable practices and outcomes. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District believes that all students, their families and staff, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, ancestry, disability, age, sexual orientation, and/or perceived sexual orientation, gender, identity, socioeconomic status, or any other individual characteristic deserve to be respected and appreciated. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District believes that all students, their families and staff, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, ancestry, disability, age, sexual orientation, and/or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic status, or any other individual characteristic deserves a safe place to speak about their experiences and share their feelings. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District seeks to overcome social, cultural, and educational barriers through advocacy, community engagement, and professional development. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District commits to recruiting and establishing a certificated staff footprint that mirrors our student population. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District commits to eradicating any opportunity gaps that may still exist in the district by ensuring that socioeconomics will not prohibit any student from participating in academic, co-curricular, or extracurricular activities. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District commits to continuing the eradication of educational segregation among the city's schools. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District supports the Black Lives Matters movement and the Obama pledge. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District believes that inequitable and rigorous public education enhances individuals and strengthens communities. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District commits to continuing to infuse the New Jersey homicide curriculum, the New Jersey Holocaust curriculum, the Teaching Tolerance Standards for Social Justice, and the New Jersey LGBTQ curriculum across all of its academic programs. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District commits to staff development and training in order to most effectively deliver the New Jersey homicide curriculum, the New Jersey Holocaust curriculum, the Teaching Tolerances Standards for Social Justice, and the New Jersey LGBTQ curriculum for all students. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District vows to educate about the emancipation of those who had been enslaved in the United States and memorialize the Emancipation Proclamation and Juneteenth as district-wide celebrations which mark freedom and liberation. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District establishes that all high school students will successfully complete African-American History and Culture in America, Hispanic Heritage and Culture in America, Holocaust and Genocide Studies, People Who Have Shaped the World, and Contemporary Social Issues courses as requirements to graduate from Hoboken High School. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District establishes that all high school students will successfully complete 21st Century Learning, College, and Career Readiness courses on topics such as the Introduction to Computer Science, Engineering, and Biomedical Science as requirements to graduate from Hoboken High School. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District commits to the continuation of gifted and talented testing for all students at the K through 8 level and the elimination of all obstacles associated with enrollment in honors, advanced placement, dual credit, and early college programs. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District continues its practices to ensure that all incoming ninth-grade students have either completed Algebra I or be Algebra I-ready upon entering high school, as it is the gateway to career readiness and collegiate success. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District commits to ensuring that our students of color continue to outperform their peer subgroups statewide and serve as a model for closing the achievement gap in the content area of language arts literacy. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District commits to ensuring that our students of color will soon outperform their peer subgroups statewide and serve as a model for closing the achievement gap in the content area of mathematics. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District commits to ensuring that Hoboken High School's four-year graduation cohort rate, which has increased from 83% in 2015 to 97% in 2020, reaches 100%. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District commits to ensuring that Hoboken High School's college acceptance rate, which has reached 97% in 2020, translates to higher collegiate graduation rates for Hoboken High School students. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District believes that all students should be members of a school community that is rooted in restorative justice and reconciliation practices. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District commits to eliminating racism, hate, and bias in its schools by integrating social justice and anti-bias standards in district-wide social, emotional learning experiences. And whereas, the Hoboken Public School District commits to continuing its active participation and partnership with the NAACP, the New Jersey Amistad Commission, the New Jersey Association of Black Educators, the North Jersey Consortium for Equity and Excellence in Education, the NJEA, Kane University's Diversity Council on Global Education and Citizenship, the NJASA, the New Jersey Holocaust Commission, the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, the Education Trust, the New Jersey School Boards Association, the Education Law Center, and Garden State Equality. Therefore, be it resolved, the Hoboken Public School District's Board of Education on this 25th day of June 2020 hereby pledges itself vigorously to support and provide equitable learning experiences for all of its students, staff, families, and community members. Okay. So as a result of that resolution, the Board of Education will see it on the agenda. I am asking for the board's support, which I am 100% sure I have, and we can then take this resolution and do everything we possibly can to make each component of the resolution a reality within the Hoboken Public School system. And that's all I have, Ms. Angley.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. I'm so proud of the district's commitment to social justice and educational equity, and this is a very powerful resolution that we have on the agenda tonight that is very important that we all support. At this time, we will be moving on to the business portion of our meeting. I know there are families and students that may not want to sit through that portion, so if that's you, feel free to drop off. If not, you're welcome to stay on and listen to the rest. We are going to move into the report section of our meeting. Ms. Good, do you have a business administrators' report?
Yeah. It's included in the report agenda.
Okay. Curriculum, Ms. McGurk.
Good evening. The curriculum committee met virtually on Tuesday, June 22 at 2:00 PM. In attendance were Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. Angley, Ms. Katamatori, Ms. Kana, and myself. There are no agenda items for this month that require board approval. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations on achieving the Q-SAC milestone of being recognized as a high-performing district. That's obviously a feather in the cap of the district and a testament to the hard work of all of our teachers, administrators, and students. And then the committee discussed the following: the summer programs, including the summer ESY, skills development, and enrichment that Dr. Johnson discussed during her superintendent's update, curriculum enhancements that will occur this summer across elementary, middle, and high school, and a coming review of district homework policies. And that's all we have from the curriculum committee for June. Thank you.
Facilities, Ms. Katamatori.
Good evening. The facilities committee met remotely on Tuesday, June 23, 2020, and attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Angley, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Simons, and myself. We discussed one agenda item and recommend it for approval. It's the approval of facilities request by Babe Ruth Baseball League by their little/junior league teams from 4:00 to 6:00 PM on certain days through July. We would approve that request. They also asked for it through August, but we're not sure what the next in September will bring, and we also will not be allowing them to use it during our graduation ceremonies week. And that's really all we discussed. That was all that was on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Ms. Kana.
Good evening. The committee met virtually Monday, June 22 at 6:00 PM. In attendance were Ms. Good, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Takirian, Mr. Delatorre, and myself. The committee reviewed and discussed all agenda items in Section 10 and 13 and recommends all for board approval. All agenda items are normal business course of actions, nothing unusual, all accounts are in balance and in compliance. And that concludes my report.
Governance, Mr. Delatorre.
Hi. Good evening. The governance committee met virtually on Monday, June 22 at 3:00 PM. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Cutfield, Ms. Delara, Ms. Takirian, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. Thank you.
And wellness, Ms. Delara.
Good evening. The wellness committee did not meet remotely, and there are no agenda items for approval tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, board members. Are there any questions or comments on committee reports? I know we all received information about the agenda items before the meeting, but anything else? No? Okay. I do not have a report tonight, but I would like to extend my congratulations and best wishes to our retirees that we have on the agenda tonight and that we've had on the agenda in the last few months. So I wish you the best of luck. Enjoy your retirement. And now we'll move on to public comments on agenda items.
There's nobody signed up for public comments on agenda items.
Okay. Consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Ms. Good, can I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Who did the second?
With Ms. McGurk.
Thank you. Ms. Katamatori.
Yes.
Ms. Delara.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Kana.
Yes.
I must abstain on 10.04, but vote yes and proudly so on the rest of the agenda.
Ms. McGurk.
Yes.
Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Takirian.
Yes.
Ms. Angley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Before we move any further, I think we're having a little technical difficulty, so I just want to pause for one second, and I'll turn it to Vicky or Rob. With that being said, we're moving on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. I'm not sure if anyone submitted anything prior.
Roseanne Versace, Sharon had something.
Okay. Roseanne?
Good evening, everybody. So I think I'm going to be a little bit repetitive, but I think it's always good to, you can never be thanked enough. So I want to start off by thanking the teachers and the clerical staff and central office staff, the building staff, custodians, security guards, cafeteria staff, everybody that was involved in keeping the schools up and running during this remote learning period. And I want to make a special mention to Dr. Johnson and Ms. Rodriguez Gomez. You were placed in an unenviable position, not only for remote learning planning, which we thought at first would be for two weeks and then lasted three months, and now planning for whatever the new normal is come September. So I just would like to say that we appreciate how the district stayed up and running, all services were still available to everyone, and I just want to say on behalf of the membership and certainly on a personal level, thank you to everybody that got us to June 18 in a, well, in a different way, but in a very good way. So thank you for that. A special welcome to all the new teachers who were hired tonight. I hope that I get to meet you in person and look forward to whatever September will bring. And again, congratulations to our retirees, the HEA members, Helen Rosado, Carmela Pascooley, Josephine Mazzone, and Frank Mazzone. Collectively, they have 162 years of teaching service to the Hoboken Board of Ed, which is just incredible. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all your years of service and dedication to the children of Hoboken, and I wish you an enjoyable, restful, and retirement full of good health. And lastly, on behalf of the HEA negotiation team, which some of us are on this Zoom, and some, well, I think some may have been trying to watch on YouTube, I would just like to say thank you to the Board of Ed's negotiation team, the Board of Ed, and Dr. Johnson for bringing us to this point tonight. I think we were all very gung-ho prior to this remote learning period, and I think when that happened, I don't know that anybody expected that we would settle a contract. And as I mentioned to the membership during the ratification meeting, I said, "It doesn't matter how much we want it." I said, "There has to be the commitment from the Board of Ed and the superintendent," and I said, and there really was. And we appreciate that with everything else that was going on, that you continue to negotiate and continue to focus on settling the contract. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the board attorney, Tony Scorillo, and our UNISERV field rep, Ed Stevens, because they did a phenomenal job of working together, again, during very strange conditions. So on behalf of the team, on behalf of the membership, I thank you very much. We look forward to working with you all and continuing our commitment to the children of the Hoboken Public School. And lastly, I just want to say, have a wonderful summer, stay healthy, and I really hope that we see you back in the building come September. So thank you.
Thank you, Roseanne.
Thank you. At this time, the board is actually going to be moving into executive session. For the purpose of discussing personnel, second.
A second.
Okay.
Sharon?
Yeah.
Can you just close a couple times? Can you re-read the statement and then get your motion and your second again?
Yeah. Sorry, everybody was fading in and out. I don't know if it's me. We'll be going into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel, and we will not be taking any action, so we'll be coming back just to close the meeting. We will be approximately 30 minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Do I? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will be back shortly. Okay, we will be back shortly.
Okay, it is now eight twenty-eight and we're just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Catamatory?
Here.
No, it's yes or no.
You don't see me, I'm here.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a yes or no vote.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Tana?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk? Ms. McGurk? Ms. McGurk? She's on mute, she knows.
Yeah.
Ms. Simon?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ms. Tequerian?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now, now we will move to the superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to begin with a few important updates. First, we have been logging in our students who are transferring out of the district. And also making sure that we're logging in all of the students who are enrolling on a daily basis. At this time, our kindergarten through 12th grade enrollment is up just over three hundred and fifty students from last year in total. Our incoming kindergarten class has topped four hundred, which is the highest kindergarten class we've had in the past five years. Second, I am expecting an announcement tomorrow regarding regarding the guidance on opening school for September throughout the state of New Jersey. And once we receive that guidance, I will begin to put together a committee and also begin surveying parents and staff, planning, and communicating with all families. Third, this summer, we are operating three categories of programs. We're going to be offering a three-week summer fitness program at JFK Stadium for students in grades pre-K through twelve. There's a range of one-hour fun, fitness-oriented programs that will be offered. We're also going to be running a hybrid ESY program at the Wallace Elementary School. This program will have children enrolled in person and remotely for academics, social development, and for related service therapies. We're also going to be hosting individualized summer academic programs for students in grades K to twelve that meet their personal needs. There will be a required program that parents can select either onsite or remote, which will take place four days a week. There's also going to be recommended programming that parents can select onsite or remote as well, and that will take place two days a week. And there's also going to be enrichment programming, which will be done remotely for all grades. Fourth, Hoboken High School's graduation is going to take place on Wednesday, July eighth, at six o'clock at JFK Stadium. Hoboken Middle School's moving up ceremony will take place on Thursday, July ninth, also at JFK Stadium at six P.M. We are also going to be hosting Hoboken Charter High School's graduation on Friday, July tenth. All safety guidelines will be followed, and only those with tickets may attend in order to meet the outdoor social gathering parameters. Fifth, I am pleased to announce that our district received a letter indicating that we successfully scored above eighty percent in each of the five CUSAC categories: Instruction and Program, Fiscal Management, Governance, Operations, and Personnel, placing our district in the high-performing category. Sixth, since March sixteenth, the entire district was launched into remote learning. And while I would like to thank each and every educator one by one, I will instead say thank you to all. From my central office team and principals to our teachers, clerks, powers, custodians, and security, this truly was a total team effort. We planned, we implemented, we took a lot of feedback, and then we started the process all over again. Each staff member did all that they could to meet the needs of our students. We grew from the experience, and we certainly learned a lot. I could not have steered the ship without the leadership of my assistant superintendent, Ms. Sandra Rodriguez Gomez; my director of operations, Mr. Damian Orno; my technology department, the facilities department, the business department; and also Mr. Christopher Munoz for taking time out of his schedule every single day to create videos and upload everything that was sent to him to our YouTube channel. So I say, I thank him for that. With that being said, there is a resolution on the agenda that I would just like to draw your attention to. It's a resolution that all of you have reviewed. I'm proud of the resolution. It reflects many voices. And I ask the Board of Education to approve the resolution as we continue the work towards social justice and educational equity. So at this time, Ms. Angley, after we go through the vote, I can come back and read the resolution so that we have it, we have it on record and publicly.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next, we'll move to the reports.
Ms. Good, do you have a disminution?
No, I have all my items on.
Curriculum, Ms. McGurk? I'm sorry. Okay, curriculum, Ms. McGurk?
Aileen, Ms. McGurk, you're on, you're on mute, we think.
Yeah.
Now you're on phone mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, not really sure what happened there. The curriculum committee met on Tuesday, the twenty-second of June, at two P.M. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. Angley, Ms. Catamatory, Ms. Tana, and myself. There are no agenda items for this month that would require board approval. And I'd just like to say congratulations to the district on being recognized through CUSAC as a high-performing district. It's definitely a feather in the cap of all our teachers, administrators, and students. During the committee meeting, we discussed the following summer programs that Dr. Johnson discussed in her superintendent's update, including the summer extended school years, as well as skills development and enrichment programs, and curriculum enhancements to occur over the summer across elementary, middle, and high school, and review of the forthcoming district color policies, and that's all from curriculum.
Ms. Angley? You're muted, okay.
It's self-on mute. Facilities, Ms. Catamatory?
The facilities committee met remotely on June twenty-third. In attendance were myself, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Angley, Ms. Simons, Mr. Callagie, and Dr. Johnson. There's only one item agenda that is, we are seeking approval of, and we recommend approval of. And that is allowing a request from the Bay Ruth Baseball League to use the field, the JFK field, for little league and junior league practice. That no cost. That will be happening from four to six P.M. through July, except for the week of the graduations when we'll need the field cleared from them. And they've also requested August, but August is dependent on whether our own sports programs begin again in August at that time. And that is all I have to report from facilities.
Thank you. Finance, Ms. Tana?
Good evening. The committee met on virtually Monday, June twenty-second, at six P.M. In attendance were Ms. Good, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Tequerian, Mr. Delatorre, and myself. The committee reviewed and discussed all items in section ten and thirteen and recommends all for board approval. All agenda items are a normal business course of actions. Nothing unusual. All accounts are in balance and in compliance. And that ends my report.
Great. Thank you. Governance, Mr. Delatorre?
The governance committee met virtually on Monday, June twenty-second, at three P.M. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Cluffel, Ms. Delara, Ms. Tequerian, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. And Wellness, Ms. Delara?
Good evening. The Wellness Committee did not meet this month, and there are no agenda items for your approval. Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I don't have a report tonight. I just wanted to say congratulations and best wishes to the retirees that will be leaving us this year. But I hope they have a wonderful retirement and enjoy their extra free time coming this summer. Next, we will move on to public comments on agenda items.
There are no public comments on agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, there are motion.
Motion.
Second.
Can I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Catamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Tana?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Okay, now, now we will move to the superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to begin with a few important updates. First, we have been logging in our students who are transferring out of the district. And also making sure that we're logging in all of the students who are enrolling on a daily basis. At this time, our kindergarten through twelfth-grade enrollment is up just over three hundred and fifty students from last year in total. Our incoming kindergarten class has topped four hundred, which is the highest kindergarten class we've had in the past five years. Second, I am expecting an announcement tomorrow regarding regarding the guidance on opening school for September throughout the state of New Jersey. And once we receive that guidance, I will begin to put together a committee and also begin surveying parents and staff, planning, and communicating with all families. Third, this summer, we are operating three categories of programs. We're going to be offering a three-week summer fitness program at JFK Stadium for students in grades pre-K through twelve. There's a range of one-hour fun, fitness-oriented programs that will be offered. We're also going to be running a hybrid ESY program at the Wallace Elementary School. This program will have children enrolled in person and remotely for academics, social development, and for related service therapies. We're also going to be hosting individualized summer academic programs for students in grades K to twelve that meet their personal needs. There will be a required program that parents can select either onsite or remote, which will take place four days a week. There's also going to be recommended programming that parents can select onsite or remote as well, and that will take place two days a week. And there's also going to be enrichment programming, which will be done remotely for all grades. Fourth, Hoboken High School's graduation is going to take place on Wednesday, July eighth, at six o'clock at JFK Stadium. Hoboken Middle School's moving up ceremony will take place on Thursday, July ninth, also at JFK Stadium at six P.M. We are also going to be hosting Hoboken Charter High School's graduation on Friday, July tenth. All safety guidelines will be followed, and only those with tickets may attend in order to meet the outdoor social gathering parameters. Fifth, I am pleased to announce that our district received a letter indicating that we successfully scored above eighty percent in each of the five CUSAC categories: Instruction and Program, Fiscal Management, Governance, Operations, and Personnel, placing our district in the high-performing category. Sixth, since March sixteenth, the entire district was launched into remote learning. And while I would like to thank each and every educator one by one, I will instead say thank you to all. From my central office team and principals to our teachers, clerks, powers, custodians, and security, this truly was a total team effort. We planned, we implemented, we took a lot of feedback, and then we started the process all over again. Each staff member did all that they could to meet the needs of our students. We grew from the experience, and we certainly learned a lot. I could not have steered the ship without the leadership of my assistant superintendent, Ms. Sandra Rodriguez Gomez; my director of operations, Mr. Damian Orno; my technology department, the facilities department, the business department; and also Mr. Christopher Munoz for taking time out of his schedule every single day to create videos and upload everything that was sent to him to our YouTube channel. So I say, I thank him for that. With that being said, there is a resolution on the agenda that I would just like to draw your attention to. It's a resolution that all of you have reviewed. I'm proud of the resolution. It reflects many voices. And I ask the Board of Education to approve the resolution as we continue the work towards social justice and educational equity. So at this time, Ms. Angley, after we go through the vote, I can come back and read the resolution so that we have it, we have it on record and publicly.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next, we'll move to the reports. Ms. Good, do you have a disminution?
No, I have all my items on.
Curriculum, Ms. McGurk? I'm sorry. Okay, curriculum, Ms. McGurk?
Aileen, Ms. McGurk, you're on, you're on mute, we think.
Yeah.
Now you're on phone mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, not really sure what happened there. The curriculum committee met on Tuesday, the twenty-second of June, at two P.M. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Tequerian, Mr. Delatorre, and myself. There are no agenda items for this month that would require board approval. And I'd just like to say congratulations to the district on being recognized through CUSAC as a high-performing district. It's definitely a feather in the cap of all our teachers, administrators, and students. During the committee meeting, we discussed the following summer programs that Dr. Johnson discussed in her superintendent's update, including the summer extended school years, as well as skills development and enrichment programs, and curriculum enhancements to occur over the summer across elementary, middle, and high school, and review of the forthcoming district color policies, and that's all from curriculum.
Ms. Angley? You're muted, okay.
It's self-on mute. Facilities, Ms. Catamatory?
The facilities committee met remotely on June twenty-third. In attendance were myself, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Angley, Ms. Simons, Mr. Callagie, and Dr. Johnson. There's only one item agenda that is, we are seeking approval of, and we recommend approval of. And that is allowing a request from the Bay Ruth Baseball League to use the field, the JFK field, for little league and junior league practice. That no cost. That will be happening from four to six P.M. through July, except for the week of the graduations when we'll need the field cleared from them. And they've also requested August, but August is dependent on whether our own sports programs begin again in August at that time. And that is all I have to report from facilities.
Thank you. Finance, Ms. Tana?
Good evening. The committee met on virtually Monday, June twenty-second, at six P.M. In attendance were Ms. Good, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Tequerian, Mr. Delatorre, and myself. The committee reviewed and discussed all items in section ten and thirteen and recommends all for board approval. All agenda items are a normal business course of actions. Nothing unusual. All accounts are in balance and in compliance. And that ends my report.
Great. Thank you. Governance, Mr. Delatorre?
The governance committee met virtually on Monday, June twenty-second, at three P.M. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Cluffel, Ms. Delara, Ms. Tequerian, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. And Wellness, Ms. Delara?
Good evening. The Wellness Committee did not meet this month, and there are no agenda items for your approval. Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I don't have a report tonight. I just wanted to say congratulations and best wishes to the retirees that will be leaving us this year. But I hope they have a wonderful retirement and enjoy their extra free time coming this summer. Next, we will move on to public comments on agenda items.
There are no public comments on agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, there are motion.
Motion.
Second.
Can I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Catamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Tana?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel?
I abstain on ten point zero four, but oh, yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yeah.
Ms. Tana?
Yes.
Ms. Tequerian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And next, moving on to the public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
There is none.
Okay. Well, that concludes our meeting. But, Ms., Dr. Johnson, would you like to, I need to turn the meeting back to you now?
Sure. I think now would be an appropriate time to publicly read the resolution that the Board of Education cast and supported. The resolution that's on the agenda is nine point zero one. It's the approval of a commitment to social justice and educational equity. The resolution reads as follows: "Resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent, approves the Hoboken Public School District's commitment to social justice and educational equity. Whereas the mission of the Hoboken Public School District is to prepare confident and resilient graduates who value academic achievement, embrace challenge, honor diversity, appreciate collaboration, and respectfully contribute to their local and wider communities. And whereas the Hoboken Public School District is a vibrant, diverse school community, and whereas the Hoboken Public School District commits to fostering equity, inclusion, acceptance, dignity, and equal rights and opportunities for all students, staff, families, and community members. And whereas the Hoboken Public School District must confront issues of social injustice in order to alleviate pain and impact experienced by those who have been directly affected by inequitable practices and outcomes. And whereas the Hoboken Public School District believes that all students, their families, and staff, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, ancestry, disability, age, sexual orientation, and/or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic status, or any other individual characteristic deserves to be respected and appreciated. And whereas the Hoboken Public School District believes that all students, their families, and staff, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, ancestry, disability, age, sexual orientation, and/or perceived sexual orientation, gender, identity, economic, socioeconomic status, or any other individual characteristic deserve a safe place to speak about their experiences and share their feelings. And whereas the Hoboken Public School District seeks to overcome social, cultural, and educational barriers through advocacy, community engagement, and professional development. And whereas the Hoboken Public School District commits to recruiting and establishing a certificated staff footprint that mirrors its student population. And whereas the Hoboken Public School District commits to eradicating any opportunity gaps that may still exist in the district by ensuring that socioeconomics will not prohibit any student from participating in academic, co-curricular, or extracurricular activities. And whereas the Hoboken Public School District commits to continuing the eradication of educational segregation among the city schools. Whereas the Hoboken Public School District supports the Black Lives Matter movement and the Obama pledge. And whereas the Hoboken Public School District believes that inequitable and rigorous public education enhances individuals and strengthens communities. And whereas the Hoboken Public School District commits to continuing to infuse the New Jersey Amistad curriculum, the New Jersey Holocaust curriculum, the Teaching Tolerance as Standards for Social Justice, and the New Jersey LGBTQ curriculum across all of its academic programs. And whereas the Hoboken Public School District commits to staff development and training in order to most effectively deliver the New Jersey Amistad curriculum, the New Jersey Holocaust curriculum, the Teaching Tolerance as Standards for Social Justice, and the New Jersey LGBTQ curriculum to all students. the Education Law Center, and Garden State Equality. Therefore, be it resolved that the Hoboken Public School District's Board of Education on this 25th day of June, 2020 hereby pledges itself to vigorously support and provide equitable learning experiences for all of its students, staff, families, and community members. Sharon, you're muted.
Keep doing that. I'm sorry. Thank you for that. I'm really proud of your commitment and the Board's commitment to social justice and educational equity. I think that's really important, that that be read to our community and acknowledge our commitment. With that being said, our meeting is concluded. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye.